I will call the meeting of the Village Board to be, Village of Beach Park Village Board to order. This is the October 22nd Board Meeting at 7:05. We'll put that as our start time. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Gust.
Here.
Trustee Jensen.
Right here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Sittick.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Attorney Forolo.
Here.
Mayor Hucker.
Here.
Mark McDonald is present.
All right. If you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
The way it stands.
One nation.
A nation. Under God.
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Next up, we have approval of the minutes of the Village Board Meeting of October 8th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were presented?
No, motion to approve, Miller.
Second.
I beat you. I beat you this time, Richard. God bless you, young man.
All right. Next, we will have the feats of strength to determine who was the second. We have a motion by Trustee Miller, a second by Trustee Jensen, and any discussion on the minutes. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
All right, motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of warrants. Bill's presented for payment in the amount of $169,882.49. Do we have a motion to approve?
Well moved, Miller.
Second Sittick.
All right, so we have a motion by Trustee Miller and a second by Trustee Sittick. Discussion? All right, not hearing any. I would ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust. Hi.
Motion carries. I am not aware of any special business to come before the Board tonight. We have public comment on any agenda items. This time would be dedicated only to the agenda items. Anything comments on an agenda, ask any member of the public that would wish to speak to please unmute yourself, announce your name, and state your case.
All right, there will be another opportunity at the end of the agenda for any and all
public comments. I have nothing to report from the mayor's report. We'll move on to trustee reports. And first up, we have Trustee Gust. What have you got for us tonight, sir?
Nothing to report tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Soon enough, we'll be talking about something, Easter eggs or...
You've got it. I'm hoping so.
Hope so, too. All right, Trustee Jensen.
Really nothing to report. We had our Finest Committee meeting last evening, and I see Mr. Kimmers joined us again tonight, was with us, and gave us a lot of good information on refinancing of TIF bonds, and I gather we're going to be hearing about that shortly. That's all I have to report, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Miller.
I have no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
I think I will save the public works related things for a little further down the agenda. Thank you.
That'll work. Trustee Sittick, anything tonight?
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that trick-or-treating hours are coming up from 2:00 to 5:00 on the 31st. And I would also like to ask if the Sheriff's Office is with us this evening.
I do not see anyone identified from the Sheriff's Office at this point.
Okay, I was hoping someone was going to be in attendance. Let's see, I just wanted to mention that because we saw the press release, which is out there about the robberies that were done at the Sitco and the 7-Eleven gas stations, which were a while back, and wanted everyone to know that the Sheriff's Office did have these two individuals that were involved in this in custody and behind bars where they belong. And is the fire, is the chief from the Fire Department with us?
No, he's not.
Okay. I did learn a little something that the Fire Department was going to have a little something fun for the kids for Halloween at the fire station, or I'm sorry, Founder's Park, for the kids to come. I believe it's from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and the Fire Department will be there to have little goodies for the kids that decide to come and their families that decide to come. I hope that will be on our website for our residents to be aware of. And what else do I have? I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, Trustee Wells, any report tonight?
No report, Your Honor. Thank you.
I can barely hear you. Sorry.
No report tonight. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. Moving on, does our administrator have any reports tonight?
No, sir. No report. Thank you.
Sure. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which includes the following items: the annual treasures report for fiscal year ending in April 30th, 2020, finance report September 2020, and the public safety report from September of 2020. Are there any, well, let's see, is there anything that the Board would like to consider separately from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Trustee Anderson?
Second, Miller.
Second by Trustee Miller. Thank you. Any discussion?
Briefly, Mayor, yeah. The items A and B, the annual treasure report and finance report, were discussed in excruciating detail last night. And, oh, and the public safety report, I just wanted to point out, we saw on the Sheriff's Report this week, at York Council in Sheridan, they arrested a person for traveling 85 miles an hour in the 40 zone. So unfortunately, I don't know if the police department, the Sheriff's Department's there tonight, but I appreciate the increase in enforcement on Sheridan. Obviously, it's due when people are driving that fast down there. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Any other comment on the consent agenda? All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have a resolution in support of the ITEP grant, which is the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grant, application for bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Sheridan Road. This was discussed at, again, in some significant detail at the TIF Committee Meeting on October 8th. Staff did prepare a memo that is in your packet that dealt with some of the questions and responses that had been brought up at that meeting. Ultimately, the TIF Committee did recommend bringing this to the Board for consideration. And what this basically boils down to is we have an opportunity through the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, which is, I believe, a offshoot of IDOT, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. And this grant is an 80-20 grant, if you will, where the village would fund 20% of the cost of construction. We're also pledging to deal with the Phase 1 engineering study, which is an approximate cost of $100,000. And this is all to the end game of installing walking paths and bicycle paths on Sheridan Road that would connect some of the village's existing pedestrian facilities, bike path, et cetera, and sidewalks, to the greater length of Sheridan Road and to try to create safety for pedestrians on both sides of the road. As there was a detailed discussion at the TIF Committee Meeting, I don't know how much to anticipate tonight, but I'll open the floor just in general. I guess first and foremost, we need a motion to approve the resolution, and then we can open it for discussion.
So moved, Miller.
We have a motion by Trustee Miller.
Second Sittick.
And a second by Trustee Sittick. All right, I'll open the floor for discussion on this. Anyone?
You want me to go first or last, Mayor?
You can go first and last if you'd like.
As you all know, no one's more excited about safety improvements on Sheridan Road than I. However, what I see...
I beg your differ.
Okay. I stand behind Linda in my excitement. The, however, what I see here is that the perfect is the enemy, the good. This, if you read the fine print, not so fine print, we're looking at a commitment, and yeah, this is not a firm commitment at this point, but certainly a promise, which I'm reluctant to back out of, between $284,000 and $543,000, plus $100,000 for the engineering. That, way too much for this. We can build a sidewalk the length of that route a lot cheaper with a few crossings for a third of that maybe. And I appreciate the work that Andrew's done here and Mark and staff, but I think we've lost sight of, at least from my perspective, the goal in terms of safety, not providing recreational path, but a safe place for people to watch so they don't get run over on the street. On my commute every day, I trail along the McChlorie Bike Path in many places, and I see flocks of bicyclists in their garb, their colorful garb with their flashy lights out on the road. They're not using those paths. And for us to build a half a million-dollar path for these people to not use, there's no way I can support that. So I hope we can, we can, you know, we may not get the grant if we reduce it too much and we don't follow their pie-in-the-sky design, but I'm willing to take that chance. This is too big a chunk for us to swallow. So I can go into greater detail, but that's the gist of my feelings about it. Thank you for the time.
Sure, sure.
Yep. And I actually have to second that because I feel the absolute same way. There's got to be an alternative on just the cost and the funds. I obviously agree that, yes, this is absolutely needed for Sheridan Road improvement, but I think we need to look at something else to make it more cost-effective. But I do think that this is definitely needed on Sheridan Road.
Well, I have a question. Back to something that Don said about putting in a smaller sidewalk that we could do ourselves. Are we, if we were to take this upon ourselves, are we not held to some kind of criteria by the state to do anything to the right of way? I mean, we can't just come up with a plan and say, "We're doing this," right?
That's correct. It would be a application to IDOT to use their right-of-way for certain purposes, and we'd have to do the engineering. We'd have to do the, I take you back to when we put the bike paths in that are there now. There were very rigid specifications that we had to follow. There were, every place that sidewalk or that bike path crossed over an existing driveway, the driveway approaches typically had to be either redone or at least had to meet certain grade requirements where the crossing was, and that adds significantly because now you're dealing with curbs and approaches. Then you've got the signalized crossings across Sheridan Road and the mandatory crosswalks that have to be installed and the appropriate signal equipment, et cetera. And it's significant. I mean, in total, the high end of this project that's being proposed, as it is put together by the estimates of the engineers initially, is 2.7 million total. So it's even more than the $500,000. It's, you know, that's the, that's the total cost. Our 20%, if you will, is significantly less than that. There's also acquisition of right-of-way that may need to happen in order to put a path in, in any side or any direction that we might choose to go ourselves. You know, if we were to take one half of this project and just do the improvements on one side, I don't, still don't know that we meet the goal of safety, but we certainly would give pedestrians a place to go. But even that, depending on what that was, may not equate to half the price. And all these things kind of go together into a much larger package, and it is rare to get an opportunity for 80-20 on something like a bike path like this. Usually, those are funds that are more road-oriented. This has been my experience.
Well, and also in the memo here, it says that the local match could be reduced below 20%. It was found to be a higher need area. Is that something that we might potentially qualify for?
Yeah, and that's something we don't know yet. That's part of, in order to even submit the grant, we have to have a resolution supporting the expenditure of the funds. But as you saw in the memo, there's no absolute commitment to do it if the costs end up being higher or the project ends up not being viable for us. I don't believe in any way that we're bound to the grant if the grant was awarded. Is that, I'm looking at our administrator, he's nodding his head, so.
Correct. So this is more, what I'm seeing is more like a good faith estimate type thing.
Yeah. As you see in the resolution, it's a range of dollars. And the range of dollars, and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't say that out loud when I was introducing this. The range of dollars are, I just turned the page and got away from it, $284,230 on the low end, $543,185 on the high end, plus the Phase 1 engineering, which is $100,000. So, you know, at the low end, we're $384,000 at the 20% match. Is that, that's the low end of the 20% match. If we were able to get qualified for the lower, down to as low as 10%, then that number would go down from there. But we don't know that until we apply. And this is kind of don't ask, don't get. And I'm not sure how to get to a real number at this point because everything is anecdotal right now. It's based on past performance.
Do we know if, if our portion of this project would be TIF-eligible?
Yes, yes.
And we do have close to a half a million dollars in that TIF fund for that area, for that district.
Yeah, and I do believe that was staff's intent was to recommend using...
At least partially. Probably not the engineering part of it, but the actual construction probably would be, could be TIF.
Well, I think engineering, too.
Soft costs are allowed as well.
Engineering, too.
Yeah, the whole, everything would be TIF.
I know it's a big pill to swallow. It seems like a lot of money, but not unlike our annual MFT projects, anytime we've got state money or grant money involved, we're always required to do a higher level of engineering, a higher level of whatever. There's always, it's always the case that we could probably do it for less if we weren't using grant money or state money. So I think that's just part of the game. But, I mean, I don't know how we could do it for that. I mean, I appreciate Don's sentiment, but I don't think we could do a similar project for what just our portion is going to be. Then we're at their mercy like we did for everything else. We would have to get all the permits. We've already, we've spent some money on lighting in that area, which has helped.
Right.
I'd like to say I appreciate Andrew's, the graphic that was added in there, that's something we discussed at the TIF meeting, the graphic that shows the location of the five accidents that we've had with injuries, including two fatalities. I think that, I don't know if that would score us higher on the grant application or not, but I think that kind of hits, hits the ball out of the park when it, when you explain why we're, trying to explain why we're, you know, going after this project.
Right.
Well, the way I look at this, it says in the memo that the village can ultimately refuse the award if the local match is deemed to be too high. So, I mean, why wouldn't we go for it with that part of it being said? You know, we're, we have an opportunity here, and maybe it'll come back and it will still be too much for us to take on, but it's quite possible it could be less than the 20%. So at this point, all we're doing is demonstrating that, yes, we'd like to, we'd like to move forward, but we're not locking ourselves in, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
If I could just interject a couple of quick notes on the updates that have been done between the TIF Committee Meeting and tonight's meeting. As was mentioned, the, we did add the crash locations in. We were able to get that data added in. The range has been added in to really try to demonstrate that, right now, we're using a reasonable worst-case scenario for the estimate. We don't really have an option because it's not fully engineered, so we don't know, we don't know how much that could possibly come down. But in talking to our consultants, their recommendation was to use this reasonable worst-case estimate because it accounts for a complex design and installation, moving utilities, et cetera, dealing with grade changes. So there's a reason that we're asking for it, the way that we're asking for it. This idea of the local match being on a sliding scale is new to this application. So I've been on webinars with the other towns. There are about 300 of us who were on a webinar yesterday, actually, trying to wrap up the last details on our applications. And these are the types of questions that everybody's dealing with right now, is how do we handle our application now that there's a new sliding scale feature? So the people who, people from IDOT who were, who are ultimately going to grade our work are giving us their best guess, and they're saying, you know, you can, in the application itself, there's an opportunity to note that the municipality is hoping for a lower local match. So that is something that I intend to do. As I mentioned before, it's not, it's not locked in. They do want you to support it, and they don't want you to start off the process by saying, by being really wishy-washy about it. But there is, there is a possibility of this being a much lower cost to the village, and you will have an opportunity, if we get a grant award, you'll have an opportunity to review that award before anything is signed. These types of awards require pretty extensive agreements to accept the money. So that's, that's way in the future at this point. There was another question. I just wanted to quickly point out, there's a question about support from other agencies. Since the last meeting, we have gotten support letters from other agencies. We did get support, a support letter from IDNR. We have support letters from a few businesses along that stretch of Sheridan Road. We have support letters from a couple other towns who were involved in the Northern Lakeshore Trail Connectivity Plan project. So we do have that as well. The questions of support from other agencies, the questions of safety, addressing a safety concern, all of those things don't directly impact the score, but they're absolutely factored in when the, when the IDOT reviewers are grading our work here. So with that, I'm happy to answer any of the questions you have, but I do, I do really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. And whether we get the grant or not, I think it's a really good exercise to go through because it could set us up for future grants.
Yes.
Yep, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Before we move on, Mayor, I'd like our attorney's opinion on the language in Section 2. What degree are we committing ourselves?
Section 2, I don't know that I have the, you're talking in the grant language?
Resolution.
In the resolution, yes. Let me take a look here. The president's here by commit and true range. Well, I would say we're committing that money under the, under the regulations of the grant program. The regulations of the grant program, as staff have vetted out, say that we can pull out if it deems, if we deem it to be too high. We are indicating that we're willing to put that amount of money in if, you know, all other things are agreeable. I don't think that's going to trump any, any of what the rights we have under the grant terms. I have not reviewed the grant terms. I'm getting that from the, from the staff memo. So I can do that, Trustee Jensen, but I don't think this binds us to go forward. And if someone were to make the argument that it does, you simply repeal the resolution at some point. So I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, yeah, I just, the implication that you mentioned in the, in the grant doesn't appear in that section. That's why I asked. It's pretty straightforward that we are committing the funds. So that's why I asked your opinion.
Sure, got it.
And I think, and from my point of view, the resolution is expressing a range in that, I think, just goes to the uncertainty of the whole project right now. A, will we, will it be funded? B, will it be funded for the project that we want, or will it be some version of that? And, you know, then on and on from there. So I think there's, as always with the grant application, I think there's always more questions than answers at the, at the point of application. And things continue to evolve as we get through it. So, all right, well, any other?
And then the other thing is, if I can, Mr. Mayor, if we do decide to go forward with contracts to construct the path, those contracts are going to have to be approved as well. So there are many chances for approval or disapproval down the line, or requirements for your approval that will be, will take place.
Yep, thank you.
One final question, if I may, Mayor. At what point is our commitment, when do we begin to design the $100,000, or whatever that might be, that's an estimated number, I suppose, as well? When would we, we have to commit to that and begin that process?
I think all we're acknowledging at this point is that we're committing to it, but I don't know that we're obligated through the grant application to start. So again, it's just us saying, if the project's going to go forward, that would be one of our contributions to it.
So that's, that'll come to the Board again. We'll have another...
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
You did say that this was TIF-eligible, the engineering Phase 1?
Yes.
Yes.
Professional costs are TIF-eligible relating to, you know, TIF projects, soft costs, attorney costs, engineering costs, surveying, things of that nature are TIF-eligible.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right.
Other comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. We have a motion to approve a resolution in support of an ITEP grant, application for bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Sheridan Road. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
I'm struggling with this one. Hi.
And Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. As always, I truly appreciate the deliberation and the conversation and expect that this will continue to be watched carefully as we proceed. If we're fortunate enough to actually acquire the grant, then we'll have some real work to do. What, clerk, what was the resolution number?
It was 34.
34. Okay, thank you very much. Then, moving on, Trustee Jensen has a resolution for us tonight.
This one is a little less painful, Mayor. This is, this resolution is to renew our IMLRMA membership for workers' compensation insurance, and I will offer that in form of a resolution. And I will offer that in form of resolution, accepting the renewal from IMLRMA for village liability and workers' compensation insurance. Uh, as, as I understand the documents that the staff has given us, uh, their, the, uh, agency is holding their, their costs from last year. And, and we've been ha, very happy with the, with the arrangement, so, um, I, I endorse the, uh, recommendation.
We have a motion by Trustee Jensen, I might add, that is a total of seventy-one thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Anderson, discussion.
It's, I see it says here in the summary that we're, um, eligible for a seven hundred twenty-two dollar discount if the payment's received by November twentieth. Are, are we going for that pay?
You just voted for a half a million dollars, okay.
Yeah, well, this, we put this cards that down, see?
As a, as a wise man once said, every seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and, um, seventy-three cents helps.
There, there you go.
And, and, yeah, Ed Dirksen said, a million here, a million there, appreciate it, that's real money.
I appreciate the fact that we are in a position to pay the full thing upfront and not have to make payments on it. Yeah, it's only seven hundred dollars, but there's a lot of communities right now that can't make that payment.
That's right.
Full upfront and be eligible for the big one percent discount, so I appreciate that.
There may even be a few that are bonding that, uh, amount. All right, um, so we have a resolution, uh, any additional discussion at this point? All right, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Ghost.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, and we're on a resolution roll here, uh, Trustee Anderson, you have one for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is in, uh, relation to our, uh, reference to our, uh, pond maintenance, uh, program that we have. The majority of it is in the, uh, the Heatherstone subdivision, but we do have a couple other, uh, retention ponds outside of that. It's a company, uh, by the name of Return to Native, that we have been dealing with since two thousand and sixteen. Um, they have held their price for several years. This year, I see there is a, what was it, a two percent increase from the last time, I didn't highlight that, so. But anyways, uh, it doesn't matter. Uh, we discussed this, uh, at the Public Works, uh, committee meeting, and everybody, uh, the staff is happy with the, uh, the work that we, uh, get out of this company. They come without being called, and they do their, uh, bi-weekly, uh, debris removal and things from the different ponds. And it's, it's worked out well in the past. So, I would make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing, uh, acceptance of the proposal from Return to Native, um, in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Second, Miller.
We have a motion by Trustee Anderson, second by Trustee Miller, uh, this is resolution number thirty-six, any discussion?
They're not gonna harm the fish, are they?
No, this is, uh, this is the same treatment and the same, uh, uh, care that they've been giving for the last five years now, I guess.
Mayor, that, that's a question I asked at, at, uh, probably first for me, I really didn't get a good answer, I don't know. And I have researched it, the algae sides and the dyes that they put in, I don't know what effect they have on the invertebrate and vertebrate critters living in there.
Ooh, invertebrate and vertebrate.
Both.
Right.
Well, I don't think they make our, the ponds like bright green, do they, or bright orange or yellow or?
Blue, they dye them dark blue.
Yeah, there's a time of the year where they put a blue dye in that keeps the light from reaching the bottom.
Right.
And it keeps the algae from growing faster, it's all it is, is a filter, uh, to keep the algae from growing faster, from what I understand.
I just wouldn't want Don to be able to go over there and catch a fish or not catch a fish.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints from the invertebrate or the vertebrate community.
Okay, well, I'm going over to cast a line.
Okay, if the fish is dark blue, uh, we should have a conversation.
Yeah, just don't eat it.
Okay.
Unless it's a blue gill, at which point I think we're okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Wells. Trustee Ghost.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Motion carries, and before we move on.
Don't kill the fish.
Yeah, and before we move on, I did wanna back up to, uh, item B there, and I, I, I just wanna say how rare it is for an insurance, uh, coverage, uh, including, uh, workman's comp and liability to basically be flat from one year to the next, um, it's almost unheard of. And, uh, as a, as an employer and business person that has to carry these types of coverages, it's a battle every single year. So, uh, our relationship with, uh, IMLRMA has been very, very good for Beach Park. And I just wanna just spread that word out a little bit because it's been, this is refreshing compared to what we've been through in the past, so. All right, uh, moving on to unfinished business, uh, Trustee Anderson has another one for us.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this would be pay application number three, uh, for, uh, from Schroders Asphalt, uh, for our annual MFT project. The engineers have confirmed the quantities and values that have been submitted, the certified payroll records were reviewed, and the, uh, the lien waivers, uh, have been appropriately turned in. So, this, this pay application number three is in the amount of four hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. And I would move that we approve the payment of this, uh, pay application three.
All right, we have a motion.
Second, Miller.
Uh, by Trustee Anderson, second by Trustee Miller, uh, discussion?
I just have a question, the, um, retainage that's withheld, does anybody know how long that is withheld until?
It will be withheld until after the spring, when the full germination of all the landscaping is done, I believe is what, uh, the village engineer told us last time. Uh, that's, it's over forty thousand dollars, that, uh, almost forty-one thousand dollars that we're holding. Um, which would be more than enough to repair the landscaping if the contractor didn't, uh, come and make it right.
Right.
So, I, I think that's what he was way, just because of the timing, he wanted to, uh, they, and they agreed, he wanted to hold it until, uh, spring growing season.
Hmm, okay.
Hmm.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ghost.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Sittick.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Uh, on to new business, uh, you should have all received an email from, uh, our administrator, uh, this afternoon, um, about four o'clock. Um, we have a, a need for discussion on the Sheridan Road, uh, TIF district bond that is, um, uh, has, has been in place for, since the beginning of the TIF, or shortly after the beginning of the TIF. Um, we have an opportunity to discuss, um, refinancing that, uh, under the same, uh, length of time. And, uh, I think, Mark, did you wanna start us off on this?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. Um, we, uh, brought an opportunity to refinance the original Sheridan Road TIF bond, um, to the finance committee meeting last night. And, uh, Andrew Kim, who is present on the Zoom call this year today, uh, presented options for, uh, refinancing that TIF bond. Uh, as you said, the remainder of, of the existing bond is nine years, and the refinancing, uh, options are, that were presented were, uh, another TIF bond that just takes the increment, um, plus insurance to, uh, provide for some savings. And then you have the opportunity for, uh, general obligation bond, um, that would, the additional backing of that, we would still use the TIF increments to pay the bond, uh, but there would be an opportunity for additional savings. Um, you know, some of the details that are provided in the email, uh, Peggy worked up with information from Mr. Kim. And, and, and in the email were also questions that came out of the finance committee. But, you know, currently, we're carrying the TIF bond at about seven point two percent. And, uh, the, if we refinance with the TIF bond, it'd be three percent, uh, if we use the, uh, general obligation, uh, uh, path, it would be about one point three one percent. The TIF bond overall would allow for, uh, total savings over the nine years, about ninety-one thousand dollars. And if we use a general obligation bond, that would be approximately, uh, one hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. The, uh, um, the date for this analysis is based on December first, because that's a call date for the, uh, the bonds that they currently are. Um, so, there's some procedural methods we've got to address going forward to, um, uh, if, if the board chose to go forward with the refinancing, uh, that's why we had to get started, so we thought it'd be important to bring to the board tonight. Uh, so, we could get consensus, um, I think staff is recommending general obligation bond, I, I believe that was the finance committee recommendation also. Uh, because of the amount of savings, there is some risk on the side. You know, you've got the full faith and credit of the village behind it. However, uh, the current, uh, bond, or excuse me, TIF revenues are greater than bond payments would be, uh, uh, for the remainder of the TIF. Uh, and we do have, as was stated before, uh, a little assurance in, uh, some, um, money in the bank, so to speak, in that TIF. Uh, it's also important to note that Casey's are becoming online pretty soon, and also, and that's gonna add a lot of value to that TIF. That's coming essentially from zero at this point. And so, for the remainder of nine years, all the Casey's value will be increment, uh, to the village in order to pay off the bond. Um, with that, uh, the, we need consensus of the board, well, the mayor can sign a order to have it published if it's a general obligation bond. But, uh, we thought it'd be important to, uh, bring it to the board, at least get some consensus to provide mayor direction. And if that's the, the road, uh, we choose to go. Um, in the email, I won't go into all the details, but we're looking at probably December sometime, or January, to publish, uh, the parameters ordinance, which essentially says, provides all the criteria for what the board would accept to sell the bond. So, you know, the interest rates and the timing and the things of that nature. Uh, it's important to note, too, that all the costs, the savings are net all of the costs for both the TIF bond and the general obligation bond. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Kim, or whoever wants to answer questions, ask questions.
Yeah, I, I'll just throw it open to the floor as far as, uh, any questions or concerns, and we have, uh, uh, Mr. Kim here, uh, that will provide some background as well. So, um, anyone have any questions or concerns?
Well, I, I'd just like to say that, um, the village has a pretty good track record, uh, with these bonds. We just recently, uh, made it a priority, and we, we paid off, retired early, the last general obligation bond. Uh, so, that kinda shows that we, uh, we are good at, uh, making good on the payment of this bond. Uh, the other issue that I don't think Mark, um, mentioned, or I might have fallen asleep when you said it, I'm not sure. But the thing that I like about it is that it's, we're not adding to the term, uh, refinancing. It's not like we're starting over again with a thirty-year mortgage and we can make our payment go down. We're sticking with the nine-year payment, we're gonna be able to save, uh, hundred and, uh, what'd you say, one hundred seventy-three thousand dollars over that nine years by going with that. And, and, and the fact that we've got enough money in the TIF fund to pay it off, I, I, I don't think there's much of a fear of having to, uh, to activate the general obligation bond, you know, the, you know, the negatives that go along with that.
Right.
So, I think our track record is pretty good, and I don't see any reason why not to save the money and, you know, go with the staff's recommendation. And, and I would add that, you know, Don should be just jumping up and down on this one, because this is paying for the engineering and a little chunk of that walkway that we just all voted in support of, so.
Mark, are you away from your mic, or has something happened to sound? I have a hard time hearing you all of a sudden.
You just didn't wanna hear what I was saying, Don. Yeah, the mic broke.
I heard my name mentioned.
Uh, other comments?
I have a, a couple of points I'd like to make, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, last night, we went through this in great detail, and then thank you, Mr. Kim, for coming back, and, and in person, no less. You said you're just gonna be audio tonight.
Yeah, I tried to make it here, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
The, uh, at first, I was reluctant to support the GO option, just because I really like, and yeah, I like money, Mark, I really do. Uh, but I also like, uh, I like the, the safety and the security, um, of, of the, the current bonds. We are really not obligated at all. If this thing were to go belly up, too bad, sorry, investors, you just lost your, your shirt. Um, and the village is, is, is pretty much on, untouched. Now, if we go with the GO option, obviously, we're assuming some risk. And the risk is, is reduced, as you, as Mark mentioned, uh, Anderson mentioned, by the fact that we have a pretty healthy already, uh, balance in that TIF fund. Now, we just talked earlier tonight about rating that, which gives me some pause. Um, so, but with, with that fund intact, it's got about half a million dollars, Peggy told us last night. That's about five, uh, about five years of bond payments of the nine that are outstanding. If that whole, if, if CVS were to close and go belly up and become, you know, boarded up store, uh, and Casey's doesn't happen, I don't think that's, either of those is gonna happen. Uh, so, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable supporting this GO option, uh, despite my reservations. But, I don't like the idea of rating that TIF fund, I like that thing you'd make to be able to fall back on if we have some problem with, with paying those things on.
Keep in mind, a larger, a chunk of what is in that TIF fund right now are actually development dollars that were generated by the bond itself. Uh, what is the total of what we haven't spent from the original bond on construction?
One hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, so, a, a sizable chunk of that is money that we are actually paying interest on, or have been paying interest on, that, uh, was originally earmarked for development and then not used. So, uh, but that being said, um, I share, uh, Trustee Johnson's concerns. Um, when we first started talking about this, um, uh, the administrator and I, uh, the first thing I said is, boy, I, I don't, I, I don't like throwing the full faith and credit behind, uh, of the village, behind something that we're not required to. Um, but then as the discussion, that's before I knew anything else. Uh, and then as the discussion proceeded, um, I, I'm also aware, I'm actually, um, um, impressed, I guess, that we can even get a rate reduction on a TIF bond. Um, because all the bonds have, my understanding anyway, all the bonds being written now are generally requiring the full faith and credit of the municipalities because of what transpired in the Great Recession. I, I may be wrong on that, Andrew, but if, uh, is that been the trend at this point?
Um, I mean, I think you, you do see some TIF bonds being issued, particularly refunding bonds, because in the case of a, of a refunding, there is some history of, of, of the TIF showing incremental revenue. Um, I would say for a brand-new TIF, yeah, that would be a little bit harder, but we, we still see them being done a little bit.
Yeah.
And not as much as, or, you know, ten years ago.
That's a good point, we do, and we do have incremental revenue coming in, uh, organically outside of the, um, CVS, um, and the future potential of the, of the, uh, Casey's. So, there is some comfort, uh, built in there as well. Um, all right, any other discussion?
I just have a question. You know, we're talking about the other project, the, um, the ITIP grant application and the improvements that that would make to Sheridan Road. Uh, if we ever get to the point where we are fortunate enough to be able to improve Sheridan Road in that fashion, would that not add to the E, the total EAV?
Uh, not to the EAV per se, because that's on the private property portion, unless it was to have a, uh, lifting effect of, you know, the property area in general. Um, I don't know that we'd see a, a direct correlation there, it would probably be indirect at best.
Indirect, oh, okay.
My, my speculation, anyway.
Okay.
Trustee Sittick, I think I heard you chiming in.
Yep, I just had, uh, with the savings, um, was the savings actually mentioned? We talked about it at the finance last night, um, just for the public, the savings that this would actually cost or save? And then was there actually a cost to the taxpayer on the refinance itself? So, I think there was a savings of quite a bit, so if Peggy.
So I think there was the savings of quite a bit, so if Peggy's with us, if she could just let the public know, that would be great. Is Peggy with us or no?
I'm, I'm here. Sorry, I had to find the unmute. So the, and Andrew could probably cover it better, but the, the savings that we're talking about with this option is one hundred and seventy-three thousand approximately. And that is net of all the expenses, aside from publication type costs, but all the costs related to the refinancing is already factored in.
Yeah, so that's, that's the net savings. There are costs, but the costs are being factored into that savings. Okay.
Correct. Right. Okay, there was, um, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. Well, I, I think what I'm looking for tonight is a consensus of the board to direct me, at least informally, to give me comfort in taking the step of issuing the publication and et cetera for this, taking the first steps for this GO bond. And so I guess if there's anyone that feels contrary, I would like to hear them speak up now to the, the GO option, and if there's none, then I'll take that as tacit consent. Am I covering that well enough, attorney?
That works well, Mayor Hucker. I, I like the approach.
All right, well.
I'm looking at you consenting.
I have a consenting glance coming from across the, the dais here. Okay. Well, then, lacking any significant dissent, we will then, at least I'll get with staff tomorrow and we'll get the ball rolling to at least get things published and, and get the first steps out of the way. Then we will be bringing this to the board in a more formal sense at the appropriate time. I think we talked about early December for
Right.
first steps. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Thank you so much. It was, uh, it's very helpful. And thank you, Mr. Kim, for attending our meeting and tolerating us.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you for having me.
More last night.
That's okay. And Peggy, I'll be in touch with you if that's okay?
Yes.
Yes, sounds good.
Yes.
All right.
You can hold the spacebar.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, thanks. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, we are then, is there any other new business to come before the board tonight?
I, I just heard Mark say, if you hold the spacebar, you unmute yourself?
Yeah, temporarily. So the entire time you're holding the spacebar down, it'll stay unmuted. Release it, it'll mute again.
That's probably not what you had in mind about other business.
I was kind of hoping. I like to be, never mind.
I would make a motion, you ask John what he wants to do next.
There you go. We do have item thirteen, which is citizens wishing to address the board. Any citizen that would wish to address our board on any topic, now is your time to speak. Ask that you would unmute yourself.
Press the spacebar.
Or press the spacebar, as we, we just learned. If, in fact, you have a spacebar.
Yeah.
Give us your name and state your case.
I'm Bob Johnson.
Hello, Mr. Johnson. How are you tonight?
I'm just fine. I got a quick question in regards to some of the beautiful new streets that have been repaved. They put limestone alongside of the streets now in most areas, but they didn't do that on Wilson or Loyola or Howard. And I even noticed that my neighbor over here had to go out and he bought limestone, larger chunks of limestone, and placed them at the corner of, which would be the southeast corner of Loyola and Howard to prevent the, the mud, because the trucks cut that corner close. And then in front of my house even, a truck went off, and because there's no gravel there or limestone, now I got a ditch alongside the edge of the road, which I think is very, very bad, because if someone with a car goes off there, you know, it'd be, it's about a three-inch drop.
Yep.
And that could cause the car to come into my house or my yard at least, so.
Okay, well, I tell you what, our, our Public Works Director heard everything that you just said, and I'm sure he'll be diving into that question right away. We'll, we'll go out and have a look at, at those three streets that you mentioned and see if we've got things according to HOIL or not there, and.
Yeah, well, they just have mud there. They grassed it in, but it, it, that's not working. And I noticed they're doing the, the, putting the limestone on the other streets as they're repaving them, so I thought that was great. And by the way, one of the things you did over here on Sherd Road, putting the lights and the crosswalk and the beautiful bike walk path along Beach Road is great. The only thing I can tell you, and I'm sure most of you probably have seen it, the people from the trailer parks over there do not use the crosswalk. They'll go anywhere along cross wherever they feel like it to get over to the other side. Now, I can tell you personally, there was a deputy gave one of them people for traversing across Sheridan Road and almost caused an accident. It could have been, he could have been hit. And, and, but almost caused the car that almost hit him to hit another car. So that's, he received a citation.
Good.
And it wasn't a warning citation.
Yeah, good. Excellent.
So anyway, the, the other thing was that I would just say, I would wish, I agree with trustee Jensen, that, you know, really, you know, we're still a small village. And, and, you know, even if you don't put concrete down, if you just blacktop a thirty-six inch, twenty-six inch area so people could walk on blacktop rather than on, in, in the mud along Sheridan Road. That's why they walk in Sheridan Road. Bicyclers do not use any of that. They, they drive, they ride their bikes on Sheridan Road. Let's face the facts, okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other members of the public wish to speak? Actually, I think Mr. Johnson was the member of the public. Okay, well, then, we have.
Mayor, in light of the late hour and the fact that the, that the Don and Joe show has already started, I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn.
We do have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second.
Third.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Siddick.
No, I'm having way too much fun.
Motion carries.
Everyone but Linda hanging up.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, folks.